To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, our flag is allegiance to me, Texas, one state and under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Before we do the public comment, we have Chief Pitts has brought some fire and fire people. We would like to introduce them. Chief Pitts, appreciate it.
I think it's important that we start introducing our public safety family too, also, which all put a face with some of the names. So I'd like to introduce Dylan Conger. Dylan is one of our firefighters. He's been with Eastland for four years, has been a firefighter for eighteen, currently serving as the chief in Norman also. So we're proud of Dylan. And this is Hayden Knight. Hayden is one of our new guys. He's one of our VCP. He's been here about a year. So he's been doing a fantastic job for us. This is Casey, let her call her Casey. It says Sandra Born. I always say that wrong. She's one of our new officers. We're real proud of her. She's doing really good. And of course Blake, been here for a while. Blake Framsider, she is her field train officer. So I'm gonna start bringing them in periodically to each meeting just so y'all get to see some of these firefighters and police officers.
Sure. Thank you.
Very proud of our first response.
Good name, the name of the place.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. We do have a public comment from Ora Hallmark. Ora Hallmark, yes ma'am.
Thank you. I am Ora Hallmark. I'm here tonight to submit a consideration for a request on a little piece of street in front of my house. I am very thankful for the new street on plumber patterns that I'm in and moss. Those are really nice and I'm proud of it. We are right between those two on the three hundred block of North Walnut. And every block, every part of the street, from Seaman all the way over to Ammerman has pavement and curb except ours. Ours, the middle of the block is like a lake when it rains. I brought a picture so I can show you. And the grass, there's no definition to the street at all. Grass just grows out on it. And it's, it just looks pathetic and it needs some attention. And I would like to see it straightened up, at least like the other blocks from Seaman to Ammerman. And I would appreciate your consideration on that.
Is this three oh five North Walnut?
Yes, uh-huh. I've been by it.
You saw it, Richard.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hallmark. We will pass that right there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Approve the minutes of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. You got a copy of those, entertain them both, and we'll be ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
I'll second him.
Mostly Shirley, a second from Tom. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
No? Mostly carries. Financial reports. Looks good.
I forgot to put out the current sales tax.
You forgot to put it what?
The current sales tax number, the number that we got for July. I forgot to put it on y'all's desk. This is June. It's in the packet.
Well, you did forget. It's the highest one.
She needs to work an extra month.
Huh?
She needs to work an extra month and make that up.
We have a June packet on time. I'll take my hat off. You said it took two of them to get it done, but you got it done. Well, the June, just for July's numbers are like one seventy-five or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're good.
And it brings us back up to where we're up instead of being down. We were on kind of a down cycle there for a little while. And I'm sorry, I forgot to put it in here.
The trend line continues.
Yeah, June is up. I mean, July is up. We were down, 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 and July is up.
I believe it's the biggest July we've had so far. One seventy-five, something like that. Okay. Any other questions for Leslie?
No.
One for me. The others.
She'll be here Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay. And that takes, will we have that in the next meeting? Will it take a meeting?
I'm not sure.
Probably September.
She can try for August. I mean, I know she will try for August, but I, I don't know. Depends on if we run into any problems, questions.
Anything else for Leslie? Thank you very much. Terry Slavens, Eastern Economic Development Update. Terry Slavens, the Director of Eastern Economic Development.
Well, first of all, I want to thank y'all for, my first six months have been very enjoyable. Things are going well. The big thing, and I can't take credit for this, I wish I could, the big thing for Eastland is the Water Burger. Really put us on the map. A lot of other companies are now contacting us because they're riding the due diligence of Water Burger corporate and they're inquiring about stuff. But a lot of great things go on. I'm gonna talk in very general terms because this is an open meeting. It is on video. And I don't want to jeopardize any of the work we've done being sabotaged because I say something I shouldn't. So I'll be very general. But as far as residential developments, the, the old Rip Edition, they're getting ready to cut a street in there pretty shortly. They'll open up twelve more building lots. That's being marketed as a three hundred thousand dollar and up building size. And you say, why do we need that? And Eastland, well, we're trying to attract the person who wants to live in Eastland commute either in Abilene or Fort Worth or so, so on. Commercially, the old Stanley Ford Cell Building, I got the engineering report on it this week. We will start putting the roads in, cutting that in. I had some diagrams on the computer. It's messing up, so we can't share those. One of the big things that we're looking at in there is, and that's owned by Mr. Petroff. I've had two different hotel builders contacting me, one out of Fort Worth, one out of Abilene. And they're in negotiations to put a hotel on the backside of that property. And they both have told me they believe either Marriott or Hilton brand, which may, you know, a super Hampton or Courtyard or something like that. So that would be it. Except both of them, they contacted within ten days of each other that they had done the study. And the traffic count on six and twenty tells us say that we need another hotel. They're running eighty-five to eighty-eight percent occupancy on a regular basis. So that's, that's really good. I have a company relocating here from the Metroplex. They, they would take it five acres behind USA and the gravel. They will start out employing about three people. They're hoping to be, hoping for business by the first of the year. And by the end of year three, they're hoping to be, their sales being about three million dollars and employing eight to ten people. So that's, that's exciting. It's not a big sales tax boost for us initially, but eventually they will bring a sand, sandblasting and powder coating business that will generate some sales tax force as well. Friday, I had our first meeting with a company that's looking to expand, not relocate here, but expand. They're looking at ten acres at the airport, which we love to do something with that acreage there behind the new buildings. And so that's, that's another great thing that we have going on. A lot of exciting things going on. Eastland's drawing some attention. Some things I can't tell you about. I wish I could, but I can't. And there's a really good development that's gonna come out on the interstate in time. But right now, I'm just not at liberty to share with public what's going on there. So. The final thing I'll say, having come into working with the city, y'all have a great staff. I've loved working with. So I had to do a great job. Leslie, all the people, City Hall, anytime I need, I ain't problem. Tony, even Tony helps me. I let me some. But, but no, I mean, y'all got a great crew. And then we're losing Leslie, but I think Lindsey's gonna feel relaxed. So, you know, y'all got a good crew working for you. Any questions?
Yeah, two. When is the Water Burger gonna open?
September twenty-second.
What year?
They are currently, they were, they were gonna have an earlier opening, but they had, it's an employee issue. They're, they're having to, you need to go train in Clyde, Stevenville. Is that the only dude they have? So they're hiring now. They're taking those people who train in Clyde and Stevenville. And that's, so September twenty, they said full blast, September twenty-second, no, no soft opening. If it changes, I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I've been.
Well, that's okay. I just curious, what, Play-Doh's?
Play-Doh's is a, is a moving target. They, you know, they told, they told me May, and I said, well, I'm gonna say June because that's the way in. Well, obviously, we're in July. About two weeks ago, he texted me and said, we're about a month out. And I think we're probably about first of September. So. They had, there was a lot of stuff that the Play-Doh's, they, they had no air conditioning in the kitchen. The hot water heater was outside at the back door. And they, they are spending a lot of money. And, and they are excited. They want to be here as soon as they can, but they said they want to do it right. They don't want to cut corners. So.
Where are the homes that you were talking about being built?
They're being, there's a subdivision that'll be across from the new tax office.
Oh, out?
Out there.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, it'll be, it'll be a process, but it's gonna be a good process.
Where is the new street they're putting in? What are they doing there?
I think they're extending.
Inspiration Building?
No, it's not Inspiration.
Wesley?
Wesley. Yeah, they're gonna extend Wesley initially. Cause he has five lots open right now. But they're right at the front of the development. They're right across from the cat office. And your prime lots are further back. And that's where people want to be. I mean, you know, your, your, your money-making lots will be in the backside of that subdivision. You don't want people driving by you. The ones at the back have, has less traffic. People driving by you and stuff like that. And so that's, that's what we're looking at there.
Any other questions for Terry?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keep it going. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
I'm leaving town, so.
Item number seven, the Board of City Commissioners made a discuss and take action on the following intended items. Item number one, discussion consideration of the Eastern Lions Club requesting funds. They offer the new playground equipment at the city park.
Well, I got voted to speak, but I don't want to take all the attention. So I want to have a lion stand up so you can just at least recognize them. Just to put them on the spot. And then, oh.
Dean's standing in.
So we've got a good group of lions. I mean, there's more of us, but I'm impressed that all of us showed up to not see it.
I've been to Lions, maybe have been to many people here, so. What other, they introduce their name, what other names?
Okay, we got Jake Gardner. We got Mr. Dean Vernon. We got Darren Als.
Alsabrook.
Alsabrook.
Okay.
Jet Whittington, Bill Moore, and Yvonne Mullany. Yes. And my name is Nikita McBride.
Thank you all for being here.
Your name is what?
Nikita McBride. Okay, so with the follow-up in your book, you should have the updated estimate. We had discussed adding the engineered fiber wood to that estimate. If you'll, it's the one you're looking at, Mr. Vernon. If you'll flip to the back, it should be front and back, I believe. And so we're up to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand when they added that lion item number twelve, that's your engineered wood fiber. It's not, it's on the new area and the old area. So he had discussed doing an eight-inch border around all the existing current playground equipment. And then the twelve-inch border around the new playground equipment. And so altogether, he estimated that to be a ten thousand. Quite right to add that.
That's what we were talking, when we met up there, that was a big discussion about what was gonna be done.
Yes, that was, we were between gravel, mulch for the engineered fiber, and then turf was way beyond our budget. And so those, yes, so that was added to the estimate. And so that is the current estimate on what our total is that we're raising funds for. And then I just, there was some questions, since we're here publicly, I can just, this estimate does not only include the new playground. Like I said, it includes adding the border around every existing area. So that's the swing sets, the, the current playground with the merry-go-rounders, the seesaws, the monkey bars. All those will have a new border around them, almost making it look like a new playground, like freshened up. And then on the current playground, you have the chain climbing thing. That's gonna be taken out and replaced with something that is up to code on there as well. And so, so that's where you're getting that total. New playground plus freshening up the existing playground. And then the next page I think that you guys have is gonna be our, our, where we're at on fundraising. Terry kind of left early, but he, he did a fantastic job at the KATX hamburger fundraiser. He brought in over fifteen thousand dollars off of that fundraiser alone. So we were, it had super successful. We sold out of burgers. Terry did a wonderful job, his family and his crew and the Lions who were all there as well. But total rates is gonna be that seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three is where we are at today. We are requesting additional funding from the city this evening. A minimum amount of twenty-five, two thousand, twenty-five thousand is what we're asking for this evening. And then at that, it does put us at the halfway mark so that we can go ahead and put in for Terry to go ahead and start manufacturing that. We can get the deposit in, get the playground, because it takes eight to ten weeks for them to manufacture that playground. And we would like to see this happen before the end of the year. And then we will continue raising.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. Be safe.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
And we have pre donors that are interested in giving large amounts that we will be contacting after this meeting with, with the results of tonight.
Okay, on your sheet at the bottom, it says thirty-seven fifty is taken out?
That is for the benches. So, yes. So when we, we're doing a bench auction. So the bench auction is two thousand five hundred dollars per bench. Half of that goes to paying for the bench, which will be a customized bench. So it will have the logo on, the logo on, or the name or whatever somebody wants to put on that bench. They can pick the colors and all of that. And then the other half will go towards the playground. So we have sold three benches so far, and actually four. We've got Stanley Ford, Sam and D. Williams, and the All School Reunion. The numbers on the right hand of your form, we just have not collected those funds yet, but they are pledged. And so they're on here. I was also, we, Carla Bradley also wants to get a bench as well. So that would be a fourth bench that's not on this list. So that's why we're pulling out half of those three. You can see at the total, we had seven thousand five hundred corporate benches. So half of that would be the three thousand seven hundred and fifty that we're withholding for the benches because that can't go to the playground. But it's still equipment that we are getting at the playground.
So is this an additional twenty-five thousand that was approved?
Yes, ma'am.
We, we did twenty-five thousand?
Yes, ma'am. At the total, you're looking at a hundred and eighty thousand. And so totally, we would be requesting fifty thousand from the city of Eastland.
Well, I'm gonna say things have changed since you were here before, and I think you probably need to update the commission on what changed.
On, on the fact that we, the grant, oh, yes, sir. So on the grant, so we had originally, we're working for the Texas Park and Recreational Grant, which is a match grant. With further investigation on that grant, there is a minimum waiting period of five months for them to hold all of our funds. So we are not allowed to touch those funds until they do all of their paperwork. And then, you know, and then we find out if we're approved. And then we proceed. And so that, we, we don't want to wait. We want to see this happen as soon as possible, but for the end of the year. And that's, that is our intention.
So you're not looking for a grant?
There are other grants that we are working towards with Savannah. There's the T-Mobile grant that we are gonna continue to apply for that. And then the.
LCR.
The LCR, yes, ma'am. And so we are going to try to get additional funding through that, along with the funding from the private owners that we are going to talk to after tonight's meeting. Which they are wanting to wait, they want to see what our city is going to put in before they commit to what they are wanting to give. And so we're, we're kind of trying to go in order there.
So right now, if you do the fifty thousand from the city and then the amount that's already pledged, what does that leave as far as balance?
So if, if tonight, if we, which we already approved the twenty-five thousand, if you approve the additional twenty-five thousand, that puts us a little over a hundred thousand. So we still have the seventy-nine thousand to raise.
And if you start on it and don't get that, then are you gonna come back to the city, want the rest of it?
That's a good question.
Why is the rush?
Well, I think, well, I, I think part of what's going on here, and I have not talked to anybody about this. I'm just reading the tea leaves. Well, the people involved in this are wanting to help. The people involved in this wanted it done ASAP. That's pretty much even awarded the grant. And the people involved want to give more money. They want to see the city be more active. And all of that makes sense. And all, and I understand that's kind of the reason why this has been a shifting deal. I'm not saying they'll come back for more money. I'm saying people are watching what we're doing as a city to decide what they want to do to help. So I think technically, even though I can't call it that, it's not a legal matching grant. I've got a big suspicion that what we do is gonna be matched by other people. And, and that's, that's the tea leaves out there that people are doing. They want to remain anonymous. And I understand that. And I have no problem with that. But I think that's what's going on. And those people have said, we'll up the ante, if the city up the ante, let's get this done. Is, am I, am I reading the tea leaves?
Yes, sir, you are.
Yeah, the only other question I have, and I think it's a great project, I really do, don't get me wrong. But I was looking over this and I saw where so many, so much of the equipment, it says like, um, on the age.
It's.
It says two to twelve, two to twelve. I don't see anything in there that a twelve-year-old is gonna be playing on.
So the whole, the entire playground, so my daughter is actually eleven years old. And she helped pick this playground out. I tried to get her to come with us, but she got really shy all of a sudden. She would love this playground. So that, actually, the online item two, you have a rope pyramid, which is ages five to twelve. I'm scared to get on that thing. So that one is a little bit, I think every twelve-year-old would love that, that item. But also the playground, if you notice, it has a, so the tallest slide, that red slide is six foot tall. It's, it's a six-foot slide. As you, as you climb, so it's a ramp, so it's all-inclusive. So wheelchair could go up in there. But as you go up in there, that is running and, and obstacle going, getting all up in there. But you do have a six-foot slide up there on the top. And so, no, I definitely, twelve-year-olds would love this slide because it's daughter-approved. Yes, ma'am.
Daughter-approved.
And, and two to twelve is like your central age. And that's what we were trying to get. We were, because you can get a toddler playground or you can get an obstacle course for the older kids. And what we were trying to do is we were trying to touch each age group. And so two to twelve is your middle to get, get the younger ones and the older ones all involved. But also with the Lions Club, we're passionate about being all-inclusive. So all-inclusive means that it has to be ADA compliant. And so if you get too many of those athletic jungle gyms, those are not ADA compliant. And so with, with our focus, that is why this playground matches where we were, you know, going on that. And so, and also all the little things, as you go up, they have like the sensory toys. So you've got drum sets and like little, so all the walls have things that they can play on as they go up to the six-foot slide. And there's even monkey bars on there too. It's hard to see it on that picture, but there's monkey bars in there too.
I was curious, what's the lifespan for this type of equipment?
And he texted us that. Cause I, somebody had asked that question. And I just cleaned my phone off, so I actually don't have any of that. Couldn't upload any more photos, guys. I deleted twenty thousand text messages. It was weird how my phone was hanging that. We can definitely get that.
What'd you say, twenty?
Cause it was you who I sent it to, huh, Samantha?
I said twenty-five here.
Yes.
That's curious.
But some of its lifetime on some of that equipment, because all of the frame is made out of metal.
It's gonna be counted in the shaded area too, so I don't keep the sun on.
Yes. And we're trying to keep all the oak trees, right, Mr. Vernon?
All but two.
All but two. And then the engineered fiber, when we, we also investigated that for longevity as well. Because turf, for instance, only has like a ten-year longevity. Mulch is like two or three years that you have to replenish. And so the engineered wood fiber, he was saying that like after, I believe it was like ten years, you just refill it. And, and so you don't ever have to actually take it out. You continue just to refill that engineered wood fiber to increase that long, lifespan on that as well. You don't have it either. We'll have to get that for you. But it's, it's steel on the frame, so that should last pretty good. I mean, how old is ours that we have up there now? How old am I? I mean, and so if, if this one has lasted forty years, then I'm sure that they're, they're even better quality now than they were then. I'm not saying you're forty. I'm sorry.
Michael Jay and I met with the Lions Club and with the Terry Rose, who's actually building this.
Yes, sir.
Got to be in whatever the building is, Savannah. He kind of looked at where to put it. And one of the things I was interested in is where it was gonna be. Because I'd heard a different story and all of the thought being agreement of where this is going to be. The new Ken Chapman Pavilion, which they did, it's just gonna be directly north of that. Right by the, there's basketball courts up there now, volleyball court. It's all in that same, everything is in the same, just the pickleball courts if we do that. They're all right there together. So parents could be in the shade watching their kids on the pavilion. They're trying to do it without cutting down any trees. And they said that the most they'll have to cut down two.
Small, that's their deal.
One is almost dead, so that one is okay. Just letting you know.
But that is, well, we were, I mean, we want to save trees where we can. But I think it's really important that this is put in the right location. So it'll be used and be convenient for everybody involved. So that's, that's.
We could, we could wait to do the deposit on the material until we reach a certain amount. But I really feel positive, even with the Ken and Chapman Pavilion, when we were building that, we actually started construction before we had earned all that money. Before we'd raised all the money. Eastland is ready to see our park being improved. They're ready to see the city of Eastland partner with our community to really upgrade that park. We want a park that we can be as proud of as we are proud of our city.
Any other questions? Savannah's got a comment she'd like to make of it.
You're recommending twenty, you're asking for twenty-five, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so if the city gives you twenty-five additional, that leaves eighty-three, seven, sixty-six, twenty?
Yes, ma'am. Sounds better.
And this is up to the commission or not. I mean, I don't know if the commission would be willing, but if we could give forty, an additional forty, that would be sixty-five thousand total. And I mean, we're funding over a third of it at that point.
Right. Which this is the time, because y'all have our support to help raise the rest of those funds.
It'd be what, sixty-five thousand total? Is that what you said yet?
And the best.
I don't have any problem with that. I think.
We would be funding a third of it. And I believe that leaves sixty-ish, sixty-four thousand.
You say sixty-four thousand?
It'll leave about sixty thousand.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, fifteen, sixty thousand.
Well, there you have.
Is there a reason that you're going up, they're asking for twenty-five and you're going up to forty?
Yes, so that we can, it leaves a remaining of sixty-eight, seven, sixty-six, twenty, and the other donors will complete that.
For sure.
It's my anticipation.
Yeah, yeah. Got faith. We've got serious people involved. We'll go to the.
I mean, that's just me talking. I don't know if that's what commission wants to do, but.
I'll make a motion for it. Make a motion that we give an additional forty thousand on top of what we gave last month towards the Lions Club's park improvements.
Okay. A motion from Tom for forty-five.
Second.
Second from Richard. Richard, is that a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Got a motion filed for forty thousand dollars to go forward to playground, an additional forty thousand dollars to go forward to Lions Club playground equipment. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye. We close same sign. All right. Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We wrap it up.
Item number two, discussion consideration of the question, the League Park Center for additional funding.
Hi there. I don't have a long spiel or anything. Most of the information should be in your packet. But we're asking for additional funding to cover building insurance. So we got a quote about a month ago that was for over ten thousand dollars for. So we got a quote about a month ago, that was for over ten thousand dollars for building insurance.
Yes, closer to seventeen thousand.
Closer to twenty thousand.
Yeah.
And then we looked at somebody locally, at Aaron's Insurance, and they gave us the six thousand, little over six thousand dollar quote that you have in your package.
It's a pretty good point, we did.
So the total cost of the insurance for...
A year, yeah, for the year, for building insurance, and it is like a general liability packet, which you do already have general liability and other insurance plans through another company. Um, sorry, I already blanked on what your question was. It's a six thousand dollar, essentially, that would include the G N L and the building insurance. And that can be paid either at one time, broken into two payments, or broken into three payments.
Sixty-two thirty-eight, wasn't it?
And that covers us from all liability?
We already actually have...
It's all liability insurance.
Accident insurance for volunteers and for, uh, uh, directors, uh, D L insurance, and of course anybody who walks through doors. We're well currently with liability insurance. This particular building insurance was only available with a, a traditional, uh, liability insurance policy, but it also has some property insurance embedded in it.
And it's sixty-two thirty-eight.
Yeah, that's with the brokerage fee, I believe.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make my statement, and I may get in trouble for this, but that's okay. This is an ongoing, this is, I'm assuming something you want us to do, put in the budget.
Yes, yeah, so as y'all have been helping out with our operational costs, we're counting this as part of our operational costs. Um, so per month, it would equate to a five hundred dollar increase that y'all would be giving us, if you looked at it that way, um, yearly.
That's supposed to sound better?
Yeah, it does, doesn't it? Doesn't it sound better?
It does sound better.
I don't know. I kinda like to pay it for sixty-two and be done. Well, let me tell you my, my, my deal here, that, that I want us to be careful about, is, is this is a budgetary type thing, and while I'm in favor of doing it, I think we need to wait for the budget process, so hold your breath for three more months is my, what had come out of my mouth. Now, what the commission wants to do is a different story, but, but I think Savannah needs to, and Leslie, and then they need to look at this as part of our budgetary process and put it in the budget, so you've got it from now on. And not be a, you know, you, you just saw a spend forty thousand dollars, you're going, why can't we have six thousand? That's a one-time expense, okay? No, I, I mean, that's a, that's a fair, that's a fair question. I mean, I'm not, if I was sitting in your shoes, I'd be going, wait a minute. But the difference is, this is a one-time deal, and you're, we need to put you in the budget.
Yep.
And, and cover this from now on, and get y'all covered, because you're doing a great job.
And so, another reason why we're like, not waiting for January first is because this is also holding us back from applying, being able to apply for grants.
This is October first.
Or foundations.
This is October first, our budget's October first.
Okay.
Our budget.
Got it.
What would be approved would be October first.
It would be in effect October first.
It would be, yeah, be in effect October first. We'd pay your October bill as long as I'm saying.
Got it.
You can get this done, if that makes sense. Now, the commission can do what they want to do. That's just where I think, what, what, I think we need to be careful of, the people coming with budget, budgetary type things, we could get hit with that every meeting, because everybody needs help. And, and it's a changing world and a changing target, but we, we need to stay in line with our budget process. It's part of my, my concern with how we do that, build this, and know what we're doing. Budgetary, because we have both of those numbers, uh, what we budget, what we have general fund to go do whatever other than that. Can you live with that?
It's all over my head, so...
I don't believe that for a second.
I have a question, were you looking at beginning it now, so that you can proceed with grant requests? Or does it matter what we got doing then to lock it?
Is your insurance out right now?
The, the, the building's never been insured.
They don't have insurance.
Never been insured.
Okay, we've been really lucky for like fourteen years.
And I think after seeing what happened to the Conley, or it's for those last storms that ripped Lisa's air conditioners off, like, we're a little nervous, so like, from our perspective, we were hoping sooner than later, but also, I can, I'm flexible.
Our, our, a concern we have that's maybe not larger than protecting the roof is our biggest concern, obviously, but it, it absolutely holds us back from, from going to foundations and asking for...
Are you setting this up on a payment plan?
We have really good inroads with...
Ask your, ask your husband, don't you just? Are you just setting this up on a payment plan?
Our general fund or our... I think I was planning on doing a single-time payment.
Single, single payment per year?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
But also, I know nothing about this, so if y'all have recommendations...
Are you talking to anybody about, the agent, just talking about a payment plan on it?
Uh, I'm sure it, uh, I don't know the details, but I suspect usually there's a percentage that you can pay first payment if it's better than this.
Yeah, and that's what you're doing here, and that was, it's a good policy.
So do we have the, did we have the funds for the hotel, hotel, to go ahead and approve it tonight? So that they could get started?
I was just gonna say...
I think we better do that.
But, because it's prorated until January first, so like, I don't know if that one-time payment for the rest of this year would be different.
What's that probably hit about?
Two thousand five hundred and eighty-six.
We'll get to the first of the year.
Will get us to the first of the year when the plan officially starts.
Well, why don't we do that?
Okay, forget, hold on, where is that, is that in here?
Going to third paragraph.
So if we do two thousand, what is it?
Five eighty-six sixty-five.
Two thousand five eighty-six sixty-five gets you to the first of the year.
Right.
And then we need to talk about putting it in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Sixty-two thirty-eight in the budget.
And we were planning on coming to you anyway to talk about the budget, so...
You're here now.
Buckle up.
You don't have to come back in January. At least about this.
Yeah.
What's the agent say about the rate, holding at that sixty-two thirty-eight come January?
I have no idea, but I would suspect that they're not gonna be held to it, I mean, the way insurance is, like you have. If, if we don't go with, we're, we're kind of at the date where the quote is gonna be valid. And I suspect if it's re-quoted after that point, it'll be higher. I mean, it's, everybody else seems to...
And that was the one way you couldn't just pay it off, so it's bound, and then to pay it off. Okay, may I, may, do you need some...
Yeah.
Chat to those people, I don't mind talking to them.
Thank you. I'm, no.
I know who they are.
Uh, let me refresh my, or amend my, my motion. I will make a motion to go ahead and approve twenty-five eighty-six fifty-five for funding for, uh, them to go proceed with that insurance. Last thing, that gets them through till January.
A second to that motion.
A motion from Shirley for twenty-five eighty-six fifty-five, and a second from Michael J. to approve the funding for the lyric center. Huh?
It's actually sixty-five.
Sixty-five?
I got it down.
It is twenty-five eighty-six.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, yeah.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion carried. Make sure you make a note about the budget for that.
I have it on here.
Okay.
Don't tell our insurance agent to set up a payment plan.
That's right.
See how good you did?
Thank you, I was so nervous.
Oh, don't be nervous, we're easy. Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, number three, discuss consideration approval of termination of the Joint Elections Administrator by the Joint Elections Commission. Yeah.
On the sheet there, um, is a description of what has occurred on June thirtieth, the Joint Elections Commission meeting that commission met and approved the termination by a vote more than four fifths. Um, the election code requires that each entity that's a part of the Joint Elections Commission, um, approve the termination, and so that's what, um, we're asking, is that the commission approve that termination of Becky Rogers.
Do you want to say your motion?
I'll make a motion, make, to approve the termination of the Joint Elections Administrator by the Joint Elections Commission.
I'll second it.
A motion from Tom, and a second from Richard to approve the termination of the Joint Elections Commission. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion carried. Item four, discussion and consideration of appointing James Doyle to the Eastern Economic Development Board to fulfill the unexpired term left by Terry Slaven, nine twenty-seven, being the end of that term.
For some reason, I thought we had already done this, but I guess we just talked about it.
We just talked about it, yes, you know.
We couldn't do it, what, what time we were trying to do it or something, and we, make this a...
I moved, we, uh, we appoint James Doyle to the Eastern Economic Development Board to fulfill the unexpired term left by Terry Slaven, nine twenty, two thousand twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Motion by Richard, and a second by Tom, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, discussion and consideration approved by, amended bylaws of the Youth Sports Advisory Board. Anybody here to talk about this?
Mayor Hunt, um, this was approved by the Eastland Youth Sport Authority Board at their meeting, um, the first of the month. The reason for the change in bylaws is because they have a, they've had an issue come up with members wanting to serve on another sports board that comes to EYSAB for request. And so they would be approving it on this side, and then coming and sitting on the EYSAB board and approving it, so it's a, it's conflicting, and they want those to be separate boards. So this file...
Can't serve on two, voting member on two different boards, correct?
For, for, for instance, what type of board? The reason I ask is because, and I used to, when we had this board before, used to, they, I mean, and I know everything's done different now, but they had the, like, the president of the East, of the Little League, president of softball league. There were three or four different presidents of those leagues that automatically served on the sports advisory board. So is, are there other boards now, rather than the leagues that...
I think part of the problem is, and make sure I've got this right, is you have like the, the youth group that they've got now that, uh...
Eastern Sports...
Eastern Sports League that, that, uh, Kevin Burrow started, kinda oversaw, you've got maybe another group over here, and so the person on the, uh, Eastern Youth Board couldn't be on this board and shut this one out type of deal. That's what they were working on.
So they do have other boards, it's not just...
It's other, so they've got, like, you've got the summer league, you've got the traveling team, uh, you've got these different groups. I, I'm not sure, we've got enough to have different leagues. We've got, I think, traveling teams or whatever that's broken off from this, and there, I think eventually they'll all be back together, but today it's not, and they're just trying to make sure that the Youth Advisory Board cannot, um, be, be hijacked, if you will, or shut somebody out.
Yeah.
They, we were trying to remove that, before that wasn't a problem, because we had, uh, the president of Little League, oh, we had a Little League. We had a girl softball, we had a girl softball. You know, we've kind of, got a little, it's a little bit different, not a big deal, everybody works together. Uh, but these, this board is spending a lot of time and energy getting the fields up and getting them in shape, and, and they wanna make sure the fields are taken care of, but they also wanna make sure that they're not, other people are not hijacking the board, or hijacking what they're trying to do for their special interest.
Sure.
Probably be on the city commission, you can't be on some other voting board, can't be on some tax committee, it's a second option.
They can be on, I think it's classified, they can be on any...
Not voting.
Yeah.
They can't be on two voting boards.
At any sports organization, yeah.
Do you want to say a motion?
Um, I'm gonna just, uh, make a motion to approve the amended bylaws of the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board.
Three boards.
I'll second that.
A motion from Richard, and a second from Shirley to approve the amended bylaws of the Eastern Youth Sports Advisory Board. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, discussion and consideration of approval of resolution twenty, twenty-two-five dash zero-nine, amending the street closure for Rip Fest Parade. They do this every year, and they're getting ahead of it now, for sure. Resolution of the City Commission and the City of Easton, Texas, enter to an agreement with the State of Texas and the Texas Department of Transportation for the temporary closure of State Highway six from Seminum Street to Oak Street, and State Highway one-twelve from Seminum Street to Halbride Street once each year on a designated date for activities associated with the old Rip Fest Parade. Is this gonna be a deal that we approve now, and then we can come back and ask again?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash oh-nine, amending the street closures for the Rip Fest Parade.
I'll second that.
A motion from Tom, and a second from Michael J. to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-nine, amending the street closures for the Rip Fest Parade. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and consideration of approval of resolution twenty-two-five dash ten, amending the street closure of the, for the lighted Christmas parade, and this is the same, same exact thing.
Right. I'll make a motion for this one as well, to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash ten, amending the street closures for the lighted Christmas parade.
A motion from Tom.
Thank you.
Second from Richard, to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash ten, amending, uh, amending the street closures for the lighted Christmas parade. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Note, item number eight, discussion and consideration of approval of resolution twenty-two-five dash eleven. Uh, this is a resolution of the City of Easton suspending the July twenty-third, twenty-two-five effective, effective date of the Encore Delivery Company request rate change, permit the city time to study the request, and establish reasonable rates, approving the cooperation with the steering committee and the city serve by the Encore higher legal and consulting services, and to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and field, finding that the meeting in which this resolution is passed is open to the public and required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel for the steering committee.
So this resolution will suspend the rate change for ninety days while the steering committee goes through and, um, litigates with Encore. And we pay for our annual steering committee membership, and so they do this for us as long as we pass this resolution and send it to them.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash eleven, suspending, suspending on July twenty, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five effective date of Encore Electric Delivery Company's requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request.
I'll second.
A motion from Richard, and a second from Tom, to pass resolution twenty-two-five dash eleven. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and consideration of awarding bids for the wildfire mitigation grant equipment.
So I have Bobby here to assist if there's any questions, and he will pass it. I updated your, um, bid there, you can watch these on there. No, I have one. Um, so the committee met, and we went through and scored, um, direct, for the wildfire defense grant, the bids that we received. The purpose of the grant is to mitigate hazardous fuels for wildfire by clearing key areas that are critical facility and ride-a-boy miles in the City of Eastland. With these funds, the city will also be implementing wildfire education and outreach with the city and the county. We opened the sealed bids on seven sixteen, twenty twenty-five at two, two P M., and the recommendations from the committee are below. Uh, we went through, we had five total bids received. Um, item one was a one-ton truck with a flatbed, and the committee recommends to award Roberts Truck Group. They met all the bid specs, and they were underneath the line item for that request. Item number two was the three-quarter ton truck with a, truck with a flatbed, and on that one, we also recommend for awarding Roberts Truck Center. And both of those vehicles they bid were the same, uh, they were both one tons, and the same dimensions, capacity, all of that, and so they were both underneath the line item of ninety thousand dollars each. Um, this is all grant money. Every bit of this is grant money, um, just preface that. We bid, on the second page, you have a premier wood chipper listed. Uh, this one, we are requesting it to be rejected by the commission. Um, it was over our line item amount, so we will be re-seeking, um, a piece of equipment for that.
The wood chipper?
Yes. They, the bid came in at ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, and that's over the line item of sixty thousand dollars. So we'll probably reduce the size down and still get the capability that we need. reduce the size down and still get the capability that we need.
I noticed that Blake Full and Rider's bid is less. What is the reasoning for going with Roberts Truck Center?
The, they, Roberts Truck Center gave us a, the bid was for a one ton truck or larger capacity. Blake Full and Rider bid as the minimum. Their bid was unclear and the truck is not at the capacity that we need it to be.
Who does Roberts Truck Center?
They're based out of Abilene. They have internationals. Is that correct, Bobby?
Yes. It's basically a gem.
It was a, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, it is full of a lot of wheels. I mean.
They bid just a regular, like, pickup truck that you see on the road. This is for, this is better for what we need it for.
I understand. It says bid specifications were given to them.
Yeah, it says bid specifications.
They did meet, but Roberts Truck Centers gave us a better quality vehicle that we can utilize for wildfire mitigation.
A lot of difference. Well, I'm just asking, what would be the downfall of going with the other Blake Full and Rider? I mean, what do you?
It is, could we not use that extra money to go towards the wood chipper? Not necessarily. You have to get that approved through Texas A and M. Bobby, did you want to talk about Roberts Truck Center, why that was when we?
Blake did about five hundred. The Roberts is basically going to equal to like a fifty five.
So it's more.
That's the.
The rating of the.
Yeah.
It's a bigger chassis.
Whether it's a half ton or a full ton.
Yeah, it's a bigger chassis.
Obviously, it's a bigger chassis, more like commercial grade.
No, we're going to need the bigger truck, especially if we get.
Why didn't our bid specification say that to begin with?
They were giving.
We put one ton or larger.
Do what?
We put on there one ton or larger.
Was Blake Full and Rider one ton or larger?
It was just a one ton.
Huh?
It's just a one ton.
So they bid the middle one, thirty five hundred.
Pretty much.
Yes, this was our bid. This is what we allow them to base it off of.
So your recommendation is that it's, since it's still within the budget constraints, you're getting a much higher rated vehicle for the meeting?
Yeah, the fifty five hundred's quite a bid.
Yeah.
More substantial than thirty five hundred.
But the grant pays for all of them.
Yes, and we will be hauling the tractor, the skid steer.
Yeah.
Twenty foot cargo trailer.
Yeah.
And I know that those trucks can do that, but.
But that fifty five hundred, that's, that'd get the job really done.
Yeah.
It will last longer.
Yes.
I mean, don't let them put words in their.
A lot of every year built, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we're getting two of the same trucks and we're not getting the, we're not going to approve the wood chipper.
Correct. And then on the skid steer with the mulcher and shredder, Warren Cat bid, and so did Vermeer of Texas, Louisiana. The bid for both of these was under the two hundred thousand dollars. Warren Cat included in their bid, the hydraulic, the exterior hydraulic cooling system, which allows us to be able to use the mulching system at a higher capacity that we're going to be able to need. And then they also included the grapple rake and the bucket.
Yes.
And so both of those things are items that they include as additional. And we're requesting that those be funded. It is underneath the two hundred thousand dollar with Warren Cat's one eighty one, two twenty three.
Yeah, maybe that, these things move that up to one eighty.
Correct. The, just for this.
It's still ten thousand less than Burner, Vermeer?
Yes. And Vermeers was not a universal type piece of equipment, correct, Bobby? As, at like Warren Cat.
And I think they just bid on just the mulcher.
Correct. They didn't include anything else.
They didn't have the brush.
And again, the bid was for them to, they could include with quick attachments.
With this being wildfire mitigation equipment, is it going to be used specifically to like, I guess, cleaning up the riverbed out here and cleaning up different properties that we?
Anything, anything that's considered a wildfire hazard, which would be, in my opinion, the grass tree.
Yeah.
That, I mean, we've never had and things we hope we never do.
Key, our key facilities, like, you know, our city properties that we have around, if there's any areas around the school that we can clear for like rideaway miles, they are very specific that they want it to be city property or rideaway property. But if there are certain areas that are private, we can send those in for approval through the state to be able to use and clean up those areas as well, as long as we can explain why. So we're asking for Roberts Truck Center to be awarded for the, both vehicles and Warren Cat on the skid steer with the grappler rake and bucket and declining the wood chipper through Vermeer. And we'll go with the.
We need to actually decline that.
Yes.
We can't just ignore it. Okay. Okay. Somebody have that motion ready?
I'll make a motion that we approve the committee's recommendations as set forth in Savannah's handout, which would be Roberts Truck Group to secure the two one ton trucks with flatbeds, decline the bid for the wood chipper, and approve the committee recommendation for the Warren Cat skid steer with mulcher and shredder and accessories.
A motion from Tom.
Second.
Approve the three and decline the wood chipper.
Seconded.
And a second from Richard. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sound. All right, thank you. Good. Got that one on. And what did it take to get that stuff here? How long would it be?
And some of it is ninety days and some of it's like October.
Are we, are we on the clock right now for this deal? The clock is running and has been since when?
July of twenty four.
We have four years?
Mm-hmm. You'll have four years remaining.
July of twenty four.
So it's five years.
Five years. We were, we were, it took us a year to get to this point.
All of that was our fault. They did not, we didn't have a meeting until.
Well, getting all the people, all the ducks lined up. And we're, just everybody knows, and remember, we're in partnership in some way with the cities, the Cisco, Ranger, Gorman.
No, Cisco, Ranger, Carbon.
Carbon and Eastland are together. And then the county also has this wildfire mitigation for the county. They've got a much bigger budget, but they're doing the same thing. What is the deal about the person that's overseeing? Are we using the county's person to oversee all the others?
Yeah, Cisco was the lead.
Cisco's the lead?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's why that was set?
Correct. One of the five.
I think Cisco's one of the digits, wasn't it?
Cisco was the lead. That's why they're going to lead it because they applaud.
Okay. All right. Item number ten, discussion and consideration of the name of I W O R Q software. Does it say that I W R Q software is signed by wildfire mitigation grants to track grant progress?
Okay, so this is I work system. And the county is currently using this system to track their progress. We are required to report that to the grant. Langford is our grant manager and the state on all our progress that we're making. And this is what their, the county is using. Cisco has started kind of piggybacking off of the county. And this is the Public Works software. You have to have the Public Works software to be able to use their asset management side. So that's why this says Public Works in there. The total that is listed in your packet will be completely funded by the grant. It's a three-year contract. And then after the initial three years, it's year to year. And if we choose not to re-up it once the grant is over, we can have our data and, and we're good to go. There's no string attached.
Then what is different here with the price? This, this says five thousand, this says thirty three hundred, this says seventy three hundred?
Five thousand is each invoice each year. The thirty three hundred is for the implementation and setup cost. And so the total for year one, seventy three hundred, year after.
Wouldn't that be eighty three hundred?
Why is it not eighty three hundred is all I'm asking?
Oh, I didn't.
Five plus thirty three.
They sent us this. I don't know why.
Good, we'll take the seventy three.
That's what it says.
We'll take the total. I mean, well, I mean, that's a discrepancy.
Yeah.
This paid for by the wildfire mitigation, the grant, they paying for it. So I can say, gee, I don't care, but it might be good if somebody asked that question.
No, I'll ask. I didn't know. I realized that. Sorry. I should have just picked seventy three hundred. That's what he said on the example, right.
This was sent to us?
Mm-hmm, by I works.
Okay. Can we approve this with that discrepancy noted in whether it's seventy three or eighty three? And you can report back to us what it was?
Yes, I will.
And that we recognize the discrepancy and they're paying for it. So God bless them.
They're nice people. Yeah, right.
Okay. Let me entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the acquisition of I work software for wildfire, wildfire mitigation.
Seconded.
With the understanding there's a thousand dollar discrepancy.
Yes.
The results. That's your motion. A motion from Shirley and a second from Richard. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sound. Motion carries. Item number eleven, discussion of the beautification program. And Shirley has asked it to be put on here. We've talked about this before.
Yeah.
So we'll, we made it an item, bring it back up and make sure that we all are on the same page and we understand where we are. And Shirley, I guess I'll let you start the conversation.
After our first discussion of it, I was kind of under the impression it's going to, it was going to be an ongoing thing. I think, I appreciate the fact that things were done for the, the all school reunion because I could definitely tell that the, there was weed eating and cleanup of the downtown. I'd like to see that continue. We talked about a beautification program and phases and just trying to get something out there. And I would like to see us as a whole, continue that and to see if we can come up with more of a plan on what we're going to do, not just, oh, we're going to work on cleaning the weeds and this thing. I think we need more of a plan. And I would also like to see, since the budgeting process is beginning to start, to see if we can put a permanent employee in there that would be, I guess, for Public Works, but would mainly be looking at maintaining the work that's been done, possibly helping code enforcement, officer patrol areas in town and maybe stay on the lookout for things that need to be addressed. Because evidently, one person is not able to do all that. We have a number of places that really need to be seen about. And I just, I mean, like I said, I appreciate what's been done, but I think we need to continue on and do a little bit more and get some input from other people. Because I, this was just my thoughts and I'd just like to see, you know, everybody participating. If we have a cleanup day, I mean, used to we'd have an annual cleanup day in the city, get information out to the public. We're going to have a cleanup day. If you have stuff that needs to be picked up, notify us. We'll see if we can get some help to pick it up for you, people who, elderly people, people who don't have a pickup, pick up limbs and trash and sort of thing. You know, let's do something to help get our city looking better. Economic development's trying to get businesses in town. And I think we need more to be done, more than less.
How many additional employees can that take? Because I know we're down pretty short, even when I worked here, with having to take people off of one project to do something else. And people are getting behind, behind. So you're going to do the right, Bobby?
Well, right now, I think we just have temporary help with, with weed eating and that sort of thing. And temporary help is not going to get it. I think we're going to have to have full-time employee.
How many parks employees do we have full-time?
We used to have, if you combined parks with cemetery, you had six full-time. We have four now.
That's work.
And we do a lot more work than we did a few years ago. We required a lot more property for, I need to mow this one down, I need to mow that one down. It's not just the same properties as before. It's just grown.
I'd like to add something. When, when we first talked about the Eastland Beautification Program, we talked about basically four different phases. And, excuse me, I didn't bring my notes on those. But, but we have talked a little about that. The efforts that were taken to clean up downtown and, if I'm saying this right, the million dollar mile, it was great. And we got, we got a lot of feedback from the people that came in for the reunion that things looked really good. And so I'm, I'm like, Shirley, I'd like to see those efforts kept up so we don't spend money having to do it over again. But the four-phase program included some different things, like how can we help the people that can't afford to clean up their yard that's got a car that's covered up, I guess by code that's okay, meaning it's got a tarp on it, so it's okay. That thing's been sitting there for months. People that, that need help with limbs, you know, recently, we've all been worn out picking up limbs. And how can we help them get those limbs to the right facility? And just, just basically, let's, let's clean up our city. Because I see the, the big value of this was, was Mr. Slavens. He's trying to attract business. We need to look like a gem. We need to be a tremendous product for people coming in town. So if we need to, as I'm sure we reinforce our, our police and our fire people, we need to also look at, at what Bobby was saying. We may need to get back and increase some people to help with the maintenance. Because I see these guys up in the park and man, they're running and doing everything they can and they're going to the next deal. So anyway, I'd, I'd like to expand on that and get everybody's ideas on this deal. So we can move forward with something that helps.
I have, I'll say, when I took care of the cemetery, I had several individuals say that when they come into a town, they look at the cemetery and see how well-kept it is. Because the city takes care of their dead people, they're going to take care of their live people. And people did that. So I would make, make sure those things were taken care of.
Well, and the entrances into the city, you plan from Cisco, each come alone.
So Bobby needs that extra.
I mean, it's, there's, yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
Bobby needs a gear.
Bobby, I've got to go back and ask a question here. You used to have six people, now you have four. How did that happen?
About twenty two years ago, so I cut the budget, they cut me five people.
You answered, you answered that question. Thanks.
Are those full-time that you're talking about?
Full-time positions.
That's all you have in Public Works or in just?
Streets.
Streets and parks.
That's street time.
Yeah.
We have three in the street department. Now we have two. We have, it's a total of five people we got cut. I've gotten one person back in those twenty years.
Yeah, because many years ago, we had a streets department, a parks department. We had employees for each one of those departments. That was their job, to go clean alleyways, to keep the weeds out of the street and doing that sort of thing.
Well, you were here twenty two years.
I know, I remember.
How did you let that happen?
Everybody's been buried, see?
You answered my question.
We've been here that long too.
Did y'all put together a citizen advisory committee? I'd love to be on there.
The city what committee?
Like an advisory committee for this.
You're the chairman now. You didn't know that? Well, Gary's had some ideas. He's talked to me a lot of things around the square especially, that I think are some pretty good ideas. Some of that may require cutting a tree or two down or trimming trees a certain way and that kind of stuff. And all of that's very important. We, I agree with everything you said. And Savannah has heard from me from, how long have you been here? Nine months? Ten months? She's heard from me for ten months about a couple of those projects. And, and I agree. One of my biggest pet peeves is grass that grows from the street to the curb and you can't tell the difference. You mentioned that when we were talking on the phone the other day.
Tell you what, it's part of the picture.
One of the things that I want us in coded enforcement is going to be a big part I want us, and code enforcement's gonna be a big part of this. I don't think they're too busy, so I disagree with that comment.
Well, honestly, it is. I mean, one person may not be able to take care of it, but.
Well, what, what, what I see needs to happen is we come up with a plan and, and get everybody together and get our brains all together. Adding people, what we need to do to get this, how big, how, how serious do we want to be about this? But one of the things I see, the code enforcement, is they're going around town and they see something that's actually a city situation. They need to pass a note to Bobby to get that handled, you know? I mean, the grass, we're talking about, hey, you know, the guy's yard looks kind of crappy, well, the street looks even worse. I have a real problem as part of the city to go climb on people because their grass is too high and our streets look like crap. I'm talking about the grass that's growing on the street and stuff. We've let that get away from us. We need to come up with a plan. Savannah's working on that. She hasn't been ignoring this problem. It's a matter of, of getting the proper chemicals, the proper trade, the certification so we can handle chemicals. You can't just do that and go to Walmart and buy something.
That was another note that I had made to myself, that if we had a, a permanent employee, that maybe we could get someone who is capable of getting certified to put out chemicals.
She, she's on that. She, she's trying to find that. She's talked to the people to find out what we can do and how that works, and she's working on getting that done. But one of the things, as we go, let's say we want to go spray, we'll use commerce for an example, personal commerce, or the far end of Main Street. The grass in the over the curb and the street look like one thing. So I want to go spray what's in the street, what am I gonna do to the people's grass that's in their yard? Am I spraying what's in the street? Because some of those chemicals get on that, and it can go back and kill what's there. So somehow, we're gonna have to come up with a beautification plan, part of this plan, to weed eat, clean up the curb, so we can separate what's in the street. And that's another part of how we need to talk about how that's gonna get done. This, I think this is an ongoing discussion. We're going to be doing the city manager evaluation tonight, and I've written some of those notes down. And, and part of that, she's heard about this. This is not something new for Savannah. She's had lots of things and lots of projects that she's dealt with. But this is, we, we need to move this up the ladder of things that we need to do and probably have them spend money to hire somebody, a permanent person, a couple of... You know, the thing in the summer is, is Bobby tries to manage his people. Summertime, it's all hands-on-deck, mowing the cemetery, mowing the moss field, taking care of streets, curbs and all of that. It's all hands-on-deck, and then you get that out of the way. What do we do with those employees in the wintertime? And I know Bobby's got things he can be doing with those guys in the wintertime. So that's a discussion I think we need to have. I think Savannah needs to have that discussion and come up with a plan and come up, come, she can talk to Bobby. Code enforcement come up with a plan for us pretty quick about how she sees this moving forward. And part of that plan is also potholes in the street and repairing that kind of stuff. Part of that same, and Bobby knows, I mean, he, he heard this already as well, and he knows that's a priority. They're trying to get the emulsion machine and all those things up and running. So that's where we are. This is not being ignored in, by no means, and you'll find out in the city manager evaluation tonight, that this is not being ignored. We'll, we'll have a plan for that to move forward. And I appreciate you bringing, anybody have anything else to say about this right now? Savannah needs to come up with a plan. I've never thought. Same delegate. Where are you going? You're the chairman of this committee. You can't leave. Thank you. What is this? Oh, I missed it down there. City manager briefing.
Okay, the streets, you've written a lot of this in those weekly updates I'm sending you, but it's all in one place. So contractors.
Public needs to know, so you're doing that now.
The con, yes, I know. Contractors completed most of Pogue Avenue. And the intersection of Pogue and Terry will be completed once the contractor installs their new pump line. So that's gonna be dirt until they finish that. They're working on it. Bobby, did they come out this week?
Yeah. No, but they're supposed to be there tomorrow.
Okay. Construction on Terry Street has been completed, and then construction on North State Street has began. North Street, North State Street should be completed. I think they're almost done with it. I said within the next few weeks, but I think it'll be done by the end of this week.
They'll be, they'll be done by then.
Yeah. Near the projects end, the contractor will go, near the projects end of all the streets, the contractor will go back to each completed street. They'll have a punch list to complete before the final payment is paid, so there's.
I want to know when that's taking place.
Okay.
Because I too want to go and look at those and make sure. Because we have had in the past the engineering firm that's overseeing some of our projects not do their job. And we are going to hold their feet to the fire, we're going to hold the contractor's feet to the fire. And I don't want any payment to be made until this commission says, we're fine, we've seen it, we approve it, we're done.
You're right.
This is, this is, right by my house today is a problem that was left and was left undone by the engineering firm. And we need to absolutely, I drove on Walnut, well, Valley, Walnut and Valley the other night. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
I'm glad I was in my big car, because I'd have lost my wife's car.
And yeah, we're working on that.
I know, and they, they want to wait and do it all at the same, okay, fine. They're gonna do it, and, and they're gonna wait and do it all at one time, and where our people don't like it. I've heard more complaints about that in this project than any other, I've really not heard it. I think they've been, other than Pogue, when it rained, and that was a disaster, and we can't do anything about that. You go over the Valley Street and go down, no Walnut, because I drove it the other night accidentally. And it's awful.
Yeah.
The way they, I mean, mess it up.
So they cut the asphalt to put in the street, and now with that, and it's not a clean cut. So it's more potholes for Bobby to worry with, is what it is. And, and it's awful, and they have, they tried to put rock in there with all the rain we had. It washed out the rock. They tried to, before, before the homecoming, they, they tried to put a Band-Aid on it. Well, we had all that rain, it's washed it all out. Just go drive Walnut and go across that beautiful asphalt street and see what happens. It's, it's not good, and we don't need to pay until this commission signs off that we're happy with what they've done.
Got it, November.
I think you're right, exactly.
And the remaining streets to be completed are Weaver Street, East Virginia Street, and Lago Vista. And then phase two of the creek improvements are complete, besides the final walkthrough with a punch list, and that will be scheduled in a future date. I don't have the exact date. TWDB flood infrastructure fund grant, tentatively to contractor plans to begin early this week on installing the pump line. Once locates are completed, they'll install the line in front of the vet and across Pogue. Tentatively, Pogue will be closed at the intersection of Terry and Pogue during this process to have the pump line properly installed. After that area is complete, the con, the concrete crew can finish that section, and Pogue will be completed. And then, once Pogue is complete with the water line, they'll continue to move west towards Lago Vista.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure.
Why, why is Weaver Street getting done?
It's all part of the flood. This, this entire thing, and I know that's very confusing for some people. This is, this is about moving water. These streets that were done are part of the flood, plain, flood.
Flood plain.
And, and it's about moving water. I know it's, they did Valley Street, and they do Pogue. They, you wonder, well, think about where we flood and where the water flows, and that's what it's, Patterson and Ma, all the water flows, and that's what it's about. They do in St. Charles, you go, what? It's about moving water. It's all, we have six, six million dollars for these streets, and it was all about moving water. Yeah, I would like to do Gaudery Street, I'd like to do Plummer Street. Okay, but that's, that's why those streets that were done, it's about flood plains and, and moving water, is what it's about.
Army Corps of Engineers set it up.
That's how I'm staying, but that's where the flooding comes from.
Well, it's government money, so we have to spend it the way they.
Oh, oh, yeah, we, we have to be very, yeah. I understand. I understand.
Corps of Engineers project.
Downtown sidewalk repairs, that's still estimated for August. So that update's still the same as the last month. Fire chief position update, several applications were received for this position. I have on here that August eleventh is gonna be the date that we do interviews. That's since changed, and it will be August thirteenth, a Wednesday. After the interview process is complete, we'll move forward with hiring of the fire chief. The station remodel, at the fire station, we're waiting for bids to be turned in on this project. Once bids are received, we'll proceed with the next steps. We've kind of slimmed this down some, and hoping that our new yes, mayor, hoping that our new request from the contractors will help us be able to get it done in a timely manner. What we were going after was not timely manner or budgetary friendly.
Okay.
It will still do what we need done with the new AC system.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The, the street that's next to F and M Bank, is that State's?
Yes, sir.
Is that part of the flood?
Yes.
Plain deal, the reason that that road is done?
Yes, sir. Budget timeline, you should have a, a second, hey, there you go, with all the dates listed. If any of these dates do not work for you, Shirley, it might be underneath that, I don't know. If any of those dates do not work for you, I need to know as soon as possible.
I'll review the advice.
If you want, yeah, if you want, you can just let me know, because if, if that's the case, I just need to know what days work and what doesn't, so I can redo the schedule.
Okay.
So the general street update, the emulsion, Bobby had the emulsion delivered today. We did a thousand gallons in the new emulsion tank initially. We're gonna start with utilizing the Durapatcher for potter repairs. That Durapatcher has not been ran in quite some time, so we're gonna start there. They're working on finishing the emulsion truck, so that should be up and running in the next few weeks. We're currently waiting for some parts to arrive. Once that's been done, we'll be able to start doing some chip ceiling jobs. Bobby's got a, we talked about that, and we're planning that out as we go.
So what is our projected date to start this little street?
With the Durapatcher, it was delivered today. Bobby, did he start any of that today, or after the mess that happened? No?
No, no, he probably started tomorrow.
You won't start it?
Tomorrow. I just, with the Durapatcher, I have some problems.
And there's more questions on page one, page two. Legislative update, House Bill fifteen-twenty-two, amends the Open Meetings Act by changing the posting requirements. This is one of the big things that's gonna hit us starting September one. Cities will no longer be required to post notices seventy-two hours before the scheduled meeting time. Instead, we are now required to post at least three business days before the scheduled date of the meeting. I did a example, and it is, you cannot count the first day that you post, and you cannot count your meeting day. So you have to have three business days in between. So starting September one, which is why the budget calendar is so important for you to review, I have to have, we, Roma will have to start posting notices for any meeting on a Monday by Tuesday, the week before. So it takes out essentially a whole week.
And once you see here, it says, should exclude the first day and include the last day.
Correct. So the notice date is the first.
You're saying not to, not to count the last day.
You can't count the meeting date, the last day of the business, the third business day, you can't count that.
The Saturday, the Sunday one?
No. So notice date and meeting date do not count. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday will be your days that you're counting.
Or the holidays.
No. You have to back up again if there's a holiday. You have to post it on Monday for a Monday meeting.
I was saying, it's just for all city boards.
Yes, any city board has to follow this.
Is it city board or any board?
Any board that follows open, open meetings up.
Yeah, school does, everyone. Wow. Okay, what else?
That's it.
Good luck, Roma.
We're gonna count our fingers.
Okay. Code compliant.
Commissioners, started June with seventy-five cases open. There were thirty-two cases closed, twenty-nine left, this was seventy-eight for the month. Out of those opened, there were fifty-seven different infractions. Out of those closed, there were forty-eight different infractions. Had two junk vehicles, nine citations were given. Had thirty-two annual notices handed out. Fines were assessed at four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. We had two hundred and thirty-one dollars paid out of that. And the different citations that were handed out, you can see at the bottom. No utility account, no CO. Property nuisance, junk vehicles, off-street parking, trash or debris, improper RV usage, parking in the front yard, toll weeds in the grass, parking on sidewalk. That's it as far as for the code enforcement for planning. Like Terry mentioned earlier, Water Burger's gonna be opening up here pretty soon. We did our final inspections for them last week. Both myself and acting power marshal went out there and did our final walkthroughs and gave them okay. Closed out the permit, so they're good. The corporate office is in the process of sending paperwork to get them set up for the water account to be for Water Burger itself, not the construction company, and get a CEO issued to them. In addition to all of the building that Terry mentioned, we also have an expansion of the Maverick Town Homes that's broke ground. We're building an additional fifty-four units back there in that back area that they annexed involuntarily a while back. And so that's underway right now.
Yeah, like how many units for them?
Hundred and sixty, no, a hundred and fifty-nine.
Hundred and fifty-nine?
Yes, sir.
That's RV park?
No, no, this is for the Maverick Town Homes, those apartments that are down.
Oh, Maverick, I was thinking about, we panicked down there.
No, no, no. So that's, that's good news there. And also, Polito's, they, they have a plumber out there that's working on stuff like Terry mentioned, and they're hoping to get that done pretty quick. Polito's has also mentioned to me about the, the call about asking about their sign. They're wanting to do something different than the, the sign that was out there, because the cabinet's been damaged by weather recently, so they're looking at maybe doing a flag, a big Polito's flag up there. Which, that kind of reminded me of the old Poncho's flag, so. In addition to the, the normal report, there's a handout there with the, Terry ran kind of last minute. And what this is, is this is to give you the actual addresses of what's been opened and closed with violations, where it's at, what the violations were. We want to try to start including this with the report, so it's not just anonymous numbers. You can see what, what addresses were working, what parts of town he's, he's, he's working.
Who appears to be published in the paper, Jerry?
Hmm? Oh, I have, oh. And the only reason with this is because if you count how many open and closed cases there are, they're not what our report shows. And that, there's something with comcape that we're trying to figure out. We think it was based on when he ran the report, is why it's not showing everything that was open and closed. So we're working with them right now, so we can see if we have to run it sooner. At the end of the month, that would actually show everything that was open and closed during that month to match his numbers. And so we're working on that, and we're hoping to have this as a reliable way for you guys to look at what's being worked on.
You have a test in our office?
I have, I had to get out the magnifying glass, and I have a couple lenses, so I'm gonna see if we can't format that a little bit better.
Any other questions for Tony?
Well, one other question I have, excuse me.
Go ahead.
What did we find out? You had mentioned something about the, the old motel deal out there was owned by a corporation, and we were having a hard time pursuing, getting it straightened.
Yeah, that's actually in the process of being sold.
Oh, it is?
And the, the person, I don't know if I'm supposed to say who it is, the person that is picking it up has something very, that's needed here. It would be a new business built out there.
Yes.
And, and it would be re-landscaped. This guy is somebody that's doing other things here in town. So we're excited to see that when that finally goes through.
Can they get a timeline on getting some of that grass cut down out there?
I think once he, I think once he gets it, once this individual gets it, that's the first thing he does.
That's, we already, we were in talks with him about that. As soon as he gets control, that's the first thing.
Snakes.
Be good to get that cleaned out.
That's great. That's a good report.
Are we good?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Get the chief.
On the police department side of things, police department answered three hundred and thirteen calls for service in June. Twelve people were arrested. We generated fifty-three case reports. for service in June. Twelve people were arrested. We, uh, generated fifty-three case reports, fifty-four agency assists. The guys hit a one thousand and fifty business checks. Seventeen traffic crashes were worked, eleven domestic disturbances. We had fourteen cases filed at district attorney's office, one with juvenile probation, and we did twelve open record requests. On the traffic side of things, they wrote a hundred and fifty citations, three hundred and twelve warnings were issued for four hundred and sixty-two traffic contacts. On the animal control side of things, they had a hundred and eighty-eight calls for service, three citations were issued, two warnings, seven impounds, uh, ten animals were adopted out. We had one quarantine. We had three substantial narcotics cases, two DWI's, five other arrests and two warrants were served. One of the, the things we had happen, Officer Rodriguez and Edwards, uh, received a call of a guy in a vehicle that was locked up. He was passed out. Uh, they broke the window, drug him out, gave him first aid until medics were able to get there. The medics told them they probably saved the guy's life. He was in a diabetic coma, so I'm pretty proud of them for taking the initiative, breaking the window and go ahead and get the guy out. We have also received, uh, Scott went, I went with him to Fort Worth and did presentation for the block grant that we were putting in for. We've been approved for that. So we'll be getting forty-six thousand dollars for the camera systems that are going out down.
When will that be? When will that be?
Uh, four minutes, twenty percent. Uh, pretty soon. I don't know, they're, they're going to like, we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about when they're going to start getting everything put in place. On the police department side, that's.
Any questions about police department?
Thanks, chief.
Okay.
Need to change your hat, man?
I don't have one. On the fire department thing, the guys, uh, they had one structured fire, one vehicle fire. They had, uh, two different brush fires that they worked, or brush fires. Fifty-four medical assists. There were sixteen traffic crashes altogether, including the city and Alton County. And then engine six and ladder six, I put new tires all the way around both of those. The tires were horrible on those two vehicles. So we got that taken care of for the guys. We're still working on the construction on the inside. I've got some bids to get that done and now we're reworking those bids to get them down within our budget and get that done for them. We added six new volunteers last week, so six new volunteers have been added and they've got one more they're supposed to go in tomorrow, if I understand it.
Great.
Morale seems to be high. Pay guys and volunteers seem to be doing all great work. We've had no complaints. Uh, the guys are doing a really good job down there. Um, Chief Fairbanks over in Cisco is assisting me and Tony with doing our business checks still, so we are not slacking on that. So any of our businesses that need something checked, so like, uh, Water Burger and all that, uh, Chief Fairbanks is taking care of that for us. On the fire chief side of things, we had fourteen, like Savannah said, we had fourteen applications. Uh, Scott and I did background checks on those. We've narrowed that down to four. So hopefully, uh, when, uh, we get everybody back in place, we put a pretty good committee together to look at those and hopefully get us fire chief fit.
Great.
So other than that, I think they're running really smooth.
All right.
Good job.
Any other questions for Chief Pitts? Are you Chief, Chief Pitts?
Chief, Chief, Vermont.
Chief Pitts.
Just permission, though, of your vacation schedule. We, uh, tell them, before we do your review.
So July twenty-fifth through August first, I will be out of town on vacation. If you need me, call, text, email. My phone's always listening.
And that's Friday to Friday, just from Friday to next Friday.
Yes.
Narrow that down. The municipal court, municipal court reports?
Should a hundred and sixty-five new cases filed, eighty-nine disposed, issued thirty-five warrants. Still has four thousand five hundred and thirty-nine active cases. City, city revenue, eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. State kept one, eight thousand one hundred and seventy-six. Total fines and court costs is nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Any other questions?
No, let's get in the food, you like it?
Very good.
Over last year?
Over last year.
Good. Anything else?
I have one question of Chief Pitts. Uh, we, there was some discussion a while back about the jaws of life that, that the fire department didn't have a good set, portable set. Uh, did that get fixed or are we working on that or is that even a topic?
That's not a topic that I know of. They, there's, there's been no request for new set of jaws. I went through the budget with them and.
Sam can answer that.
We purchased a set of, of, uh, wireless, cordless.
Yes.
Portable, yeah, battery powered.
Yeah.
Tools, a full set. Um, three, three tools, the cutter, uh, spreader and the ramp.
They didn't, so I, I went through the budget process with them and everything they requested to be, be asked for, but they have that.
Oh, good.
It sounds like they are.
Probably does.
Good, good.
Okay. And according to the Texas government code, five-five-one-dash-zero-seven-four, personnel matter. The convenient executive session, the section five-five-one-dash-zero-seven-four, the Texas government code, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline and our judicial, a public officer or employee, city manager evaluation and the municipal court judge. And we will be in executive session at seven-thirty-eight. All right, we are back at an executive session. We got an executive session at eight-fifty. Uh, are there any action items we take from the, uh, executive session for the city manager evaluation?
Yes. I knew that we, uh, give her five thousand dollars, Savannah, five thousand dollar bonus for this year.
Additional salary. Don't use the B word, additional salary.
Oh, additional, correct. Okay, all right. I'm sorry, additional, correct. Sorry.
I got a motion from Richard to give Savannah a five thousand dollar additional salary. Got a second from Shirley. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number, what is that, fourteen? Is executive session regarding municipal judge.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we do not renew the contract for Pam Chaney, uh, that I believe is due on, uh.
Fired all this.
Eighteenth.
She said it that way. I'll second it.
Got a motion from Michael J. to not renew the contract for the, uh, current municipal judge, Pam Chaney, and got a second from Tom. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I'm going to adjourn.
Tom made the first. Tom made a motion.
He got, I'll second it, too.
All in favor, say aye. Thank y'all.
Boy, we right on this.